Okay, can everybody hear me? Okay, we're good. Let's go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington Regular City Council to order. And at this point, if we could just start with a pledge of allegiance and put our hand or our heart and I'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. At this point, we'll have a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Milawonbue?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig?
Present.
Councilmember Painter?
Here.
Councilmember Corio?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Here.
Councilmember Crable?
Here.
Councilmember Bray?
Here.
Mayor Renner?
Here. Thank you very much. We're going to turn, this is, I know, all deja vu all over again, but I'm going to turn this over to our city manager. I know you gave us an update 48 hours ago. Just going to turn this back to you very quickly here. Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple of quick COVID update comments. And as we anticipate moving into Phase Four this Friday, Governor Pritzker making that anticipated change. We're looking internally to see what that does with our municipal operations. That's something that we'll share with council and with community. But the one thing that has already occurred under my authority with the executive order, the dining type of operations that are allowed, outdoor dining, that's already been extended. And we're messaging that to the community through August 31st. We added language that was already in play, but we wanted to highlight language that also emphasized an ADA component. So everything that we've seen up to this point has been extended through August 31st. We're messaging that and added, highlighted an ADA component in the executive order. Second item, Mayor, is the finances. Scott Rathbun, our finance director, is going to give his monthly finance director's report. But related to COVID, while we are doing better than the loss projections that we, you know, expected or projected, it's still going to be a financial impact and Scott's going to walk through that in greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Mr. Gleason. I've got nothing but, heard nothing but accolades about what we've been doing downtown, or I should say what you have been helping to direct downtown. And it has just been outstanding. People are hoping that this is the kind of vibrant nightlife and evening life that we continue to see in our downtown. Thank you so much. At this point, we're going to go to public comment. And Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who's on the line?
We do, Mayor. We had one gentleman, John Reed, who called in. And then we also just had one emailed comment, which we can cover after.
Okay. Mr. Reed, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The comments were deleted because of technical difficulties on Monday. We'll start over. I would just like to say, I want to throw my support between Alderman Painter, since she's trying to be, she's attempted to be silenced by the socialist on the council, which is no great surprise, since that's what socialists do. They don't let other people talk. It's usually their way or the highway. So I, I, I see that. But I do stand behind you, Alderman Painter, and Donna Bowlin, behind you also. Your comments on Facebook were dead on. And I must say, I was quite disappointed in you, Jeff, during the pledge of allegiance, holding up the sign to cover your face. That's classy. Nothing but total class. I can't wait for you and Jen to resign or to be pushed out. And it's cute, Jen, that you say I'm the divisive one. Not quite. I'm not the one causing the cracks in the seat of council. That's you, dear. That's all you. And Kevin, I hear from Mr. Matthew that the mapping of the sewers is going as planned. I hope that's correct. He sent me a text the other day to tell me that was in the process. Hopefully, I won't have any more, people on Low Street won't have any more problems with the sewers backing up into their basements when we get this all handled. So I do appreciate the prompt attention to that. So, and that's pretty much all I have. I just wanted the two aldermen that are pushing back against the socialists on the council, that they have my support totally, 100%. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Let's move then forward to the, oh, you have an individual to announce. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Justin Boyd emailed comments over earlier today and they were shared with council.
Thank you so much. Now, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any members of the council, again, I know this is deja vu, would like to have removed from the consent agenda before we approve? And I'm sure there are some. Let's see. Councilmember Corio?
Aye.
Aye what? I'm sorry.
The letter "Aye."
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, that's right. You pulled, okay, I'm sorry. I have a note from the other night. Okay. Councilmember Corio is pulling item "I." Councilmember Emig, are you pulling item "H" by chance?
Indeed, I am.
Oh, gosh, I'm so shocked. Okay. Thank you very much. And Alderman Milawonbue, are you pulling? I'm not sure what item you pulled last time, but go ahead.
I can tell you, if you'll let me.
I was trying to, I was, oh, was it "O"?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, oh. Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the items as presented with the exception of items "H," "I," and "O"?
I will make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Bowlin. Is there a second by Councilmember Corio? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue?
Yeah.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, I'm going to note these in the order in which I received them this evening. Councilmember Emig, you pulled item "H." Is that correct?
That is correct. I need to recuse myself because I sit on the board of the Ecology Action Center. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Is there a, I see Councilmember Bowlin. Councilmember Bowlin, are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Second? Oh, Councilmember Crable. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? This is with respect to item "H."
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue?
Yeah.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Motion carries no nays to announce. Madam Clerk, we move to Councilmember Corio, who has pulled item "I", and that's the improvement for the Hamilton Road Extension. Councilmember Corio?
Yep. Not a fan of this project. Just want to be able to vote no.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve or disapprove this?
I would like to, I'd like to make a comment. Can I make a comment?
Oh, can we have a motion and a second on this one then, before we go into debate? Nobody wants to make a motion?
Move. So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Crable. Is there a second?
Looks like Councilmember Painter would like to second.
Councilmember Painter's second. Okay. Now, Councilmember Bowlin, I'm sorry. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, just so that we, if we had any courts, we would, we at least have a motion on the floor.
Sure. There's a lot of chatter about this project, most of it negative. So I would like to clarify, this is a federally funded project similar to that Colton sewer repair. And it actually is not a thoroughfare into a rich white neighborhood, which people may think. It's actually, and as a matter of fact, Ward Two has 25% lower income families and half of those are people of color. This actually will provide an opportunity for economic development. It's zoned, I believe, commercial, industrial, and it will give an opportunity for people to start their own business, expand business, and hire people. So that is why I'm in favor of it, even with all the negative chatter that's out there.
Right. Well, Councilmember Bowlin, I, the, I haven't seen the latest negative chatter. In fact, I don't know that I've really heard negative chatter in the last seven and a half years on this. And it's been even longer than that, that it's been on the table. But absolutely, the connect transit supports us strongly because it would be the, the primary south, east, excuse me, east-west corridor to the south of Bloomington. And you could go from corporate south to the interstate on a four-lane highway without ever going on Veterans Parkway. I believe the figure was 27% reduction in traffic on veterans at peak times. I mean, there's all kinds of benefits, economic development benefits to this proposal, and transportation, and sustainability kind of benefits to this. And I would certainly agree with you. This is something that we've been working on for, well, even before I was mayor. So it's certainly the better part of a decade or more on this project. And lots of groups, in fact, if people are saying that this is going to benefit wealthy neighborhoods, that's absurd. Because this is primarily something that's going to benefit lower-income areas and modern-income areas and our entire community and sustainability for us for the future. That connect transit also very much supports. So thank you, Councilmember Bowlin, for bringing that to our attention. At this point, if there aren't any other comments, I'm going to call for a vote on this motion. Okay, so the motion is to approve as presented. Council, excuse me, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Excuse me.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue?
Yeah.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
No.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to turn to item "O" that Councilmember Milawonbue has pulled. Mboka.
He just, Mayor actually needed to recuse himself.
Okay, all right. At this, is there a motion to approve as presented without?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Moved by Councilmember Bowlin. I saw a wave by, I believe, Councilmember Bray. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll unless there's, I don't see anybody raising hands for discussion. Okay, Council, excuse me. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We're going to next move to our, again, deja vu all over again, at least at this point. Item 9A, a public hearing, amendments for citizen participation, as requested by the Community Development Department. We have a very brief presentation of three minutes that we have heard before, but we, we want the main points to be presented again. And then we have a very brief council discussion of five minutes. And since we've talked about this, I'm going to hold us to the five minutes tops. So I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer Tony. And the recommended motion is just to receive the comments and amendments to the Citizen Participation Plan. We're not actually acting on this at this point, other than to receive them. So at this point, Jennifer, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, very clearly. Thank you.
Excellent. Good evening, council and mayor, and thanks for this opportunity. Really, just real quickly, I want to highlight the, the comments that are open right now, or that we're accepting for, are on an amendment to our Citizen Participation Plan. It's the last page of the plan that's in the packet. And we created an amendment to allow us to use the waivers and flexibilities that are provided to us for our CBPG coronavirus funding. Primarily, the three items that we are requesting comment on is the ability to hold virtual public hearings, the ability to reduce our public comment period time down from 30 days to at least five days, should we need to do so in order to make a quick change as new needs arise. And then also, it reduces the, the notice for public hearings from a minimum of two weeks down to a minimum of five days. And so really, that's really all we're asking for public comment on at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council, comments? Or a motion to accept?
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to, for the record, to let you know that nobody registered to speak at this public hearing. So we've got that. And then there's no recommended motion for tonight.
Well, I thought the recommended motion was to just receive comments as I see on the agenda.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I just meant that there's no motion to take action on, other than the comments. Sorry.
Yeah. Can we have a, well, we don't really have any comments to receive, but could we have a motion to receive the no comments that we've received?
So moved. So moved.
Oops, second. Moved by Councilmember Corio, second by Councilmember Crable. At this point, since there's really not much discussion, since we didn't receive any comments this evening, if you could please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Sure. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonbue?
Yeah.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all so much. In our continuation of Groundhog Day as a, as a meeting, we're going to go to item 9B, as in "Boi." And Kevin, if you're on the line, you got five minutes, but we're, I'm assuming you can be maybe more succinct, but you do have up to five minutes. Kevin?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to present this information about the Rebuild Illinois Grant Application that we are wanting to submit for the Locust Colton Combined Sewer Overflow Elimination Project Phase Two. And I have a brief presentation that I want to share with you, if it will advance here. There we go. And the Rebuild Illinois is a competitive public infrastructure grant program that this year is allocated $50 million for this program. It uses grant funds based on Governor Pritzker's five-year economic development plan. The limit per project is $5 million. What is the Locust Colton Project? This is a multi-year, multi-phase project. We've already done Phase One, but there's nine phases total. We've also picked up part of six and seven with the Phase One project. So this is something that in our CSO permit, we're obligated to get done by 2030. So this is Phase Two that we've been waiting on funding for. We applied for low-interest loans through the IEP A State Revolving Fund. And we were denied funds last year just because there's more applicants than there are funds to be available. So we're in the queue again. But we saw this grant as an opportunity to be able to move forward with this project and be able to use those grant loans potentially for Phase Three or Four, moving on down the line. So this Phase Two includes areas over by south of Washington, west of Mercer, north of Grove, including Moore and Warner Streets, and lining some sewers in that area, but Moore and Warner, specifically getting new sewers and water mains and, and new street when, when we're done and so forth. And then curb-to-curb resurfacing on parts of Washington, Mercer, and Grove as well. Total estimated cost for the project is just over 4.6 million. We're showing in our budget a local share of 170,000. So the grant request is just over $4.5 million. This is kind of a map, overview map of the area. The, the area to the, to the west along Washington Grove, those are really just sewer lining projects through those areas. And then the, the main focus of the infrastructure upgrades is really, like I said, over by, by Moore and Warner and Mercer area there. So what is the benefits of this? Well, you know, it, it has a lot of benefits because, number one, it obviously benefits the, the homes in these blocks, but it, it benefits more than that because these CSOs that we have at Locust, they discharge into the Sugar Creek, which runs through the, the core of Bloomington and affects many, many people that live throughout Bloomington. And, and because of the heavier rains this year, we've had some backups in these, in these neighborhoods, basement backups. And, and so by separating this out, the, the storm water doesn't flow in with the sanitary water anymore and prevents the surcharging that has been occurring. It, as, as noted here in the bullet points, it will maintain the value of approximately 46 homes in the immediate area of this project. Meeting value of the homes is 174,000. And, and so this is a very important project for the community, not just these neighborhoods. This is a little graphic that will help illustrate what we are trying to achieve by separating the sewers. When sewage comes out in a home from a separated sewer area, it goes straight into the sanitary sewer. But then, when it rains, the water that falls goes into the storm sewers and, and then goes to the, to the creeks, and everything is separated. But in the area that we're talking about with combined sewers, the sewage, once again, it goes from the home out to the street. But it goes into a combined sewer that, when it rains, the, the rainwater goes into the storm inlets and ends up going into the combined sewer as well, which then results potentially in a, a CSO, a combined sewer overflow into Sugar Creek. So these simple graphics kind of help illustrate what happens. It does not happen with every storm, but larger storms like we've seen this year, it has happened. And, and besides the overflow into the creek, it can back up into homes. So this public hearing is part of the grant process, and these were key points we needed to make with this project. And, you know, there was a number of people involved on staff to put this grant together. I want to thank Jim Karch and Michael Hill and Jennifer Tony and Austin Grammar for their contributions to the different parts. And, and if I could, we, we do have an update to, to the grant application. There was a discussion last time about the minority plan. And so we've, we've got updated language on the city's website that, that says that the city of Bloomington will meet grant requirements in setting a minimum goal that 14.2% of contracted companies be owned by minorities, females, or persons with disabilities. We will establish a minimum goal that 20% of the project dollar amount be awarded to companies owned and controlled by persons who are minority female or have disabilities as required by the Business Enterprise Program for Minorities, Females and Persons with Disabilities. The city will literally specify goals in the project bid documents and will partner with community service agencies, churches, advocacy organizations, and extended communication outside of the standard media outlets in an effort to effectively reach minority populations and meet or exceed established goals. So that is the, the presentation for tonight. All the entertaining questions.
Thank you. Before we do that, I want to make sure that we turn to Madam Clerk. Do we have any public comments related to this public hearing, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor. We did not have anyone register. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then just also to, to clarify that a, a broader citywide policy would certainly be welcome and I think widely supported, rather than one that's just specific to a specific project. Because we don't want to do this on a project-by-project basis. I think we want to do this on a, a general policy, moral commitment basis by, on the city. But at this point, councilmembers, I see Councilmember Corio, you have a comment. I'm going to start with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Kevin for an excellent presentation with really great graphics that made that really accessible. I had a lot of, I, I had a lot of people kind of struggle to understand this project, and I think that really helps to clarify it. And then thank you so much for incorporating the language around minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses, and even going above and beyond some of the stuff that other communities are doing. Thanks.
Thank you. And, and just, just to, to, on, on the heels of Councilmember Corio's points, is that, that is the kind of thing that, that we probably want to work on so that we have a citywide moral policy commitment to that, irrespective of the project. So we don't have to continue to talk about these things on a project-by-project basis. And that the community understands that we're all in this together and that we do value diversity in all its forms. Councilmember Crable?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, this whole second meeting was worth it just to see those graphics again. So.
Well, that makes one of us.
Who did the graphics? Who did the graph? Great presentation, but who did the graphics?
I don't know. We'll, we'll find out.
Okay. And, and again, just to echo what the mayor said and Alderman Corio, you know, I really appreciate the, the addition to the Minority Impact Plan. And, and like the mayor said, let's do this across the board and let's just make sure it's not a, an empty goal, but something that we, something that we, we work on. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Crable. Okay, at this point, we don't need any motion?
Mayor, if I could interrupt for just a second, City Manager Gleason would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tim, go ahead.
No, just a quick comment, Mayor and Council. The additional comments that Kevin shared that was highlighted on the minority portion, this is something that's already captured in the grant application packet. Would not have been in the application packet that was a part of the council agenda. But it's steps that we have to go through anyway on projects like this. I'll tell you where we've been remiss is not highlighting it like we did tonight. So it is something that's in place and definitely look for more.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gleason. Excellent point. Oh, Councilmember Emig, excuse me, you have, you hand up.
Oh, good. Nice work. Thanks, Mayor. You saw me. That's great. I just, I just want to say thank you on behalf of Ward Four. I, I, at least in my, I appreciate the diagram, but in, in some of the, the recent review I've done of the literature, the NIH and EPA really recommend that the separation of sewers is a good thing for the environment. And I'm, I'm glad that we're, we're getting a lot of external financial support and the taxpayers are coming back. I mean, tax expenditures are coming back to the community. So thank you. And I, I really do appreciate elevating and highlighting the language. Thanks for that.
And thank you, Councilmember Emig. And now that I live in your ward, I am one of your constituents, I'm even more happy about this. But I'm kidding. I, I'm not kidding about being a constituent. But all right, at this point, we're going to move around, along to our regular agenda.
Mayor, excuse me, sorry to interrupt again. Before we go on to the regular agenda, City Manager Gleason would like to pull one of the items.
Oh, right. Of co, okay. Mr. Gleason, did you, you wanted to pull item "D," I bet?
I did. And sorry for the interruption. We had rehearsed this differently. But rather than it coming from elected when the item's called and tabling it, I'm able to pull it. This is one of Alderman Mathie's council initiatives. He's obviously not present tonight. This item will be presented at the council meeting on July 13th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to consider items A, B, and C. We'll start with item A, consideration and action to approve a resolution committing local funds in the city of Bloomington to rebuild the Illinois Grant for Phase Two of the Locust Colton Overflow Project. We have, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Cothee very briefly, and then we have up to a five-minute council presentation, excuse me, council discussion. And I'm going to hold us to the five minutes, given that this is kind of a do-over. Excuse me, Mr. Cothee?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We really have nothing more to, to add. That presentation before covered everything. So unless there's some additional questions, I'll turn it back to you.
Questions of Mr. Cothee. Councilmember Corio?
Oh, it wasn't a question. I, I moved that we purpose presented.
Okay, is there a second to Councilmember Corio's?
A second.
Second.
I will second.
Just many seconds. Whoa, everybody's in line. Okay, Councilmember Bowlin, since you're the one who's on my screen and I heard you, second my Councilmember Bowlin, if there's no other discussion. I don't see any. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
And Mayor, could I also clarify the motion, just so that it will include the revi- Um, and Mayor, could I also clarify the motion just so that it will include the revised grant applications?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm assuming that that's what, that, uh, the motion was
Perfect.
as proposed and noted in the agenda.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Great.
All right, Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonway.
Yeah.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Motion carries. No nays to announce. Madam Clerk, we move to item B, consideration and potential action, uh, regarding ordinance twenty twenty dash eighteen. We've seen this before. And that is declaring this a, a local emergency due to the, the COVID virus and enacting various emergency measures. The recommended motion is that the proposed ordinance, uh, to modify Section Two H regarding the moratorium on interest fines, fees and penalties be approved. And then there's an alternative motion that the, uh, proposed alternate draft ordinance amending twenty twenty dash eighteen, uh, modification, uh, regarding the moratorium on interest be approved. So I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Gleason for five minutes and then council discussion for up to five minutes. Mr. Gleason, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is also, uh, one of the council initiatives that Alderman Ma- uh, Matthew brought forward. Uh, there's been past discussion, uh, where, uh, uh, the request was, um, you know, as piggybacking off the mayor's comments, uh, for food, beverage, utility, administrative, uh, court fines. What's already captured in the executive order is, uh, hotel and amusement, uh, for those that are not open. And, uh, we have, uh, a staff recommended, uh, ninety-day extension at the end of Phase Four. And then also there's an alternate, uh, amendment, or there's an alternate, uh, uh, motion for at the end of, uh, Phase Five, uh, ninety days beyond Phase Five.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we have a, uh, I see Councilmember Bowlin. Councilmember?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the, uh, recommendation of staff, the first one.
Okay.
So ninety days after Phase Four.
Phase Four. Okay. Is there a second? Councilmember Crable, is that second? Okay. Second by Councilmember Crable. Any further discussion on this? Say none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonway.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We move right along to item C. That's continue, a consideration and action, uh, to ratify the Machinist Lodge contract, uh, excuse me, Machinist Lodge One Thousand contract, requested by the Human Resources Department. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, the, the recommended motion would be to purp- uh, purp- approve or ratify the contract. And I'm gonna turn this over for five minutes to Mr. Gleason and then up to a five-minute council discussion. Mr. Gleason, and once again, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, Machinist, uh, Lodge One Thousand. This is in the Water Division of the Public Works. Uh, we had, uh, contract negotiations. This is yet another win-win, uh, situation, uh, with, uh, our union, uh, brothers and sisters. Uh, this is, uh, one of the last, uh, groups, uh, regarding sick leave buyback. Uh, we had several of those contracts last year, but we knew that we had Lodge One Thousand, uh, the following year. So it's going to follow, uh, the, the same, uh, agreed upon items as we had with the AFME six ninety-nine was the biggie. And there's a couple of others where employees will have to, uh, signal, uh, the intent to retire by October thirty-first of this year and in fact, uh, retire by April thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. So it's mirroring language that we had for the contract, tracks last year, but just one year later. It's a three-year contract. Uh, the, uh, increases, uh, again, are identical to, uh, what we agreed to with AFME six ninety-nine. It's a two and a half percent increase. Uh, May one of twenty-one will be a three percent increase. Uh, effective, uh, May one of twenty-two will be a two and a half percent increase. Then there's a two-tiered, uh, signing bonus, no reopeners. Again, uh, this was completed in, uh, four or five sessions. Uh, it was very quick, uh, very respectful session, uh, led by HR and by the Public Works, uh, Water Division. Uh, again, a win-win.
And I just want to say thank you very much. It's not just good for taxpayers when we don't have to pay uh, an expensive six hundred dollar an hour lawyer to do this month after month and sometimes year after year for a single contract. And that we're doing it in-house, the staff are doing it in a respectful way across the table. This builds morale. This helps us across, again, it is true win-win. And, and I have to say, City Manager Gleason, uh, once again, thank you so much. This is a far cry from what we are, are, are used to in the city. So, um, very happy about that and very happy that we've got a mutual agreement on sick leave buyback. But, uh, at this point, we've got, I've got several hands up. I'm gonna start with, uh, Councilmember Bow.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy with the negotiations and I've been working on getting that accelerated payments removed for four years. So I'm really happy about this. But in the, um, the packet, I just want some clarification. It says, uh, please note that accel- accelerated payments may occur from other payments such as overtime and vacation. Can that be clarified?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Gleason.
And that is true. Uh, the, the biggie is the sick leave buyback, uh, for us, uh, as the city of Bloomington. But also the IMRF formula that went into effect in, uh, October, I think of twenty twelve. There's also other things that will trigger smaller accelerated payments, but not to the degree of some of these larger sick leave buyback payments, uh, that we've experienced in the past. So a bank of vacation time, a bank of other earned time could trigger that, but it's not gonna be to the degree of some of the larger sick leave ones, uh, buybacks that we've seen in the past.
Okay. Um, yeah, it, well, it also mentions in here, um, about the, the timing of when they draw their pension. And it could, uh, result in future accelerated payments. Would we be able to project that out into the budget? I mean, how would we know in future years when this future accelerated payment would be come forward?
And we actually, if, if I understand the question, I think I do. Uh, we have some employees that might have the time, might feel that there is value enough to take the sick leave buyback and retire under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, but may not have the age. So, uh, in, in full disclosure, when we talk about the impacts today, we might have, let's say, a, a forty-seven-year-old employee, uh, that's not gonna be eligible to draw their employee until fifty-five or age sixty without penalty, but may have twenty-seven, twenty-eight years, uh, on.
Okay.
To your question, we will be able to track what the impacts are once we know who's retiring. And we'll know that by October thirty-first of this year with this group.
Okay. Okay. The last question is, um, retirement health savings account, where fifty percent, uh, of unused sick leave will be paid into that account. How does that affect accelerated payments?
It does not. That's, that's a separate, that's a separate bank that's used typically for premium payments, other, uh, healthcare type of, uh, related items, uh, medical procedures, that kind of stuff.
So that is not at all tied to the, um, accelerated payments with IMRF?
The health, the health savings account is not.
Okay, that's it. Great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And thank you, uh, City Manager, and thank you staff for your work on this. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that the proposed contract be ratified.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bray. Motion to, always welcome to have a motion. Motion, uh, to approve. Is there a second? Councilmember Carrillo. Uh, and I have Councilmember Crable who wants to say something. And Jeff, where are you?
I'm right here. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Um, I just, I wanted to ask, uh, Tim, um, and thank you for all this and your staff. How many, uh, employees are el- would be eligible for the sick leave buyback?
It's a relatively, uh, small number with this group. Uh, I think the, uh, total group number is in the thirties or forties.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, I released the, uh, mic because I was getting some feedback. And that's the total population of this group. And there's, uh, far less, uh, that will probably actually, uh, that will take advantage of the sick leave buyback.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. At this point, we have a motion on the floor in a second. I've seen other hands and we're out of time. So council, oh, excuse me. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawonway.
Yeah.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Thank you very much. The motion carries. There are no nays to announce. Madam Clerk, I'm gonna turn this over to, uh, Mr. Gleason, who I think will introduce Mr. Rathman, uh, who will give us a, uh, I'm sure, very brief, uh, Finance Director's report. Uh, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, it is that time of month and, uh, it's, uh, and it's, it's an exciting report this time because we're getting a little bit more clarity on what the COVID impacts are. And, uh, while Scott's gonna share some, uh, good news, uh, you know, still keep in mind that, uh, we have had negative financial impacts. Uh, but, uh, Scott, uh, are you on the line? There you are. Uh, I'll turn it over to, uh, Finance Director Rathman.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Um, tonight, we're gonna be going over April. We'll be doing that again, uh, next month. Uh, we're gonna do a more comprehensive review at the Committee of the Whole in July, where we're going to, um, update twenty twenty and then also try to update the projections for twenty-one, the COVID-related projections for twenty-one as well. There, there are some complexities at work related to our revenue recognition. Um, I've discussed these before. Um, but I wanted to highlight them again, um, specifically related to sales tax. We have, uh, revenue recognition policies for the city where we can backdate revenues up to sixty days, so two months. So the, the sales tax revenues that came in June, uh, that were posted to June from the state that we received from the state in June, um, are made effective for April. Well, April's actual retail activity, the first full month of our quarantine, we actually will not receive those, uh, revenues from the state until July. So we're not gonna have visibility on a full month of quarantine for sales taxes until the first week of July or so. So, um, targeting the Committee of the Whole for a more com- comprehensive review of the financials, the twenty results, which are, we're getting pretty final now, and then updating some of those projections for twenty-one. Um, we'll, we'll have a much better feel for it. Um, I'm partial lifting of the quarantine. That, that adds more complexities, but, um, at least we'll know what a full month quarantine will look like and we can apply that to May and then apply some assumptions thereafter. So tonight, we're going to, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. We're gonna compare our results to, um, the COVID prevent, projections and then to budget. And we're gonna be focusing just on the general fund this evening. Enterprise funds, nothing material has occurred, um, since the last update. We've been keeping an eye, you know, we were reading things about, you know, consumption, water consumption could go down. We haven't seen that. So, um, all, all things, uh, going well there, other than golf, um, which I've mentioned before. So, um, first comparison we'll do, we'll, we'll review the, uh, major tax revenues versus budget. So next slide, please. So we, we've simplified this. We've taken out one column where we had a year-to-date budget because, as you can see in the far right column, um, we have twelve months of revenue reflected. So, you know, focusing on that FY twenty budget variance column, um, there's a few more red categories than there were previously. What I wanted to do, I, I, I probably should have put, included this on, on the schedule and I'll do it next month, but I wanted to give you a feel of for the movement we've experienced related to COVID. So in February, I'm gonna go back the, the month before, uh, the quarantines really started, uh, the shelter in place started hitting. Um, the Home Rule Sales Tax, uh, category was two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars under budget. And you can see that it, it finished almost one point two million hundred. Um, State Sales Tax, which finished positively at fifty-eight thousand, um, which I'm thrilled about that. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. That was three hundred and seven thousand dollars ahead of budget, uh, in February. Food and Beverage, um, scrolling down, uh, the line a little bit here, where you can see it's finished thirty-three thousand dollars under budget in February. That category was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars ahead of budget. And then, um, two more, Local Use, um, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, uh, almost three hundred thousand dollars above budget. That's the category that went up. So we were at two hundred and two thousand dollars above budget in February. So, uh, people at home were, were still purchasing, uh, they were just doing more of it online as we've been experiencing. Um, and then the final one, uh, Hotel Motel, we were actually a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars above budget in February. And you can see that we finished thirty-five thousand dollars under. So there, there was a lot of movement related to, uh, COVID. Um, when we did our assumptions, our projections in late March, early April, um, utilizing, you know, communications that were available at the time, terms like shelter in place and quarantines, um, some of the information on, on the internet, um, we, we took down the, the final twenty twenty revenues very substantially related to that. Not knowing what businesses were going to be considered essential and gonna be remaining open. Um, who would have thought that liquor stores were gonna be remain, remain open? I've mentioned that before. Uh, the, our, our packaged liquor tax, I, I don't have it listed here, uh, but we finished well above, I think I have that in the next slide, potentially, at well above, um, budget in that category. So, uh, having said that, we're gonna, we're gonna, I want to show you, um, where we ended up compared to our projections on some of these major revenues. So next slide, please. So I, I want to spend a moment just kind of talking about the layout of this exhibit. Um, the first column, that's not, that's not the total budget for the years. That's depending on the category and when we thought, uh, the effects of COVID were gonna hit, that's two to three months of, of budget. And then you can see the second column is our COVID projection. And the third column is the, is the delta, the difference. So just highlighting the top line, um, for the last, I, I believe that one is three months of Home Rule, um, where we had projected a budget of five point five, uh, we projected COVID of four million. So there's one and a half million dollar, uh, impact that we projected related to the shelter in place. Um, our current estimate for Home Rule Sales Tax is four point six million. So that we, you can see, um, that are, I'm gonna go, go all the way out to the right, that we beat our COVID projection by five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Now, part of that, we took, we took Home Rule down by fifty percent, as I just mentioned a few minutes ago. We only really experienced related to April revenues, the half months of quarantine. So, um, you can see, you know, a million and a half, or, excuse me, um, that one point five million dollar reduction, we went down nine hundred thousand. So a still, a significant decrease, but fortunately, um, not as severe as, as we anticipated. State Sales Tax, um, we took down seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand. It only went down a hundred and twenty-five. So that's a plus six hundred thousand dollar, uh, variance to our COVID projection. So coming in better than our projection. You know, what's driving that is, um, grocery store sales that are not subject to Home Rule. So I, I'm sure everyone's aware, you know, there was, there was a little bit of a run on groceries, um, at the beginning of the quarantine. Um, that shows is a positive impact on our, um, State Sales Tax revenues. You know, the Home Rule is not applied to groceries, uh, pharmaceuticals, um, licensed vehicles, et cetera. So, um, we're pretty pleased with that. And then, you know, going on down, I'd mentioned last month, we had two categories that had come in that would finalize by then, income tax and replacement taxes between those two, four hundred thousand. Uh, ambulance fees, we've adjusted that down a little bit. Last month, I, I had commented that that came in four hundred thousand. We've taken that down to two fifty-nine after doing the insurance adjustments. But you can see that in the final column there, um, compared to our COVID projected impact, we, we had taken down our projection for the last couple of months of the year by four million dollars. And, um, they came in two and a half million dollars better. But I want to highlight that while we came in better than that projection, that COVID projection, um, you know, as we went through on the previous slide in this one, we did have a pretty material impact from COVID on our revenues versus budget. So next slide, please. So the, the one thing I didn't not comment on, um, before I run through this exhibit is related to our expense projections related to COVID. At the time, we did that projection in late March, early April. We weren't sure when that quarantine was going to get lifted. Initially, it was through, well, the second one was through the end of April. So we assumed that potentially a May 1 lifting, we'd be ramping up for summer programs, et cetera. So we left some of our seasonals, expenses, supplies for parks, et cetera. We left those up in our COVID projection. So we were conservative on our revenues, conservative on the expenses, and we ended up coming in about $800,000 under the COVID projection expenses. So, you know, you just using the high level items that I've discussed so far, the 2 and 1/2 million dollars that we came in above on revenue plus 800,000 over in expenses, that's a $3.3 million swing from where we were projecting a month and a half ago, which was a $3 million loss. So just using those very high level numbers, we're currently projecting, and you can, if you want to run down to the bottom of this exhibit right here, a surplus for the year. A lot of that's being driven by expense reductions that I'll get into in a moment. But positive news, and it's and it's a good thing, too, because as everyone knows, we did the three scenarios related to 21, a May 1 quarantine lift, a June 1 quarantine lift, and July 1 quarantine lift. And we did a recessionary impact for the entire year of an 8 and 1/2 percent. And and those projections at that time were a $5 million hit related to a May 1 lift and then about 2 and 1/2 million dollars thereafter. So we know we extended our quarantine one month beyond May 1 for sure. So having those extra dollars available is going to come in, I think, very handy, to use a casual term, but we'll know more about that when we do the July Committee of the Whole comprehensive presentation. So looking at this exhibit, we've kind of simplified this. We took out the projection. We've called the year-to-date column, which was the year-to-date actual, and then we adjusted it for projection numbers. We just re-titled that to year-to-date estimate. So that is our estimate per category. And we've included encumbrances, those are purchase orders in in that column. So this is our best estimate now for year-end. We still have invoices coming in, vendors still rolling those to us. It's really slowed down. We're finalizing. Typically, we don't have any material audit adjustments, but the audit is still ongoing. So those are kind of my disclaimers related to that. And then we always do a year-end purchase order review. So any purchase orders that should be closed out, so we could have another a bit more positive impact. So real, real quickly, the total revenue, I want to highlight that use of fund balance. I've talked about this a lot. If you look at the budget, that's the way we balance our budget because we show it as revenue and it's not real revenue. We're using reserves. So when you look at the year-to-date column, there's no actual dollars. And that's like if we were, if we had overspent, we'd be showing a loss. If everything turned out exactly as we had budgeted, we would have had a 1.5 million dollar loss for the year, a budgeted use of fund balance. So looking at the budget, revised budget remaining, and I wanted to comment briefly on this as well, because it's not real intuitive, the way the signs work. So if you look at taxes, we have 88.451 revised budget, 87, basically 88 million in year-to-date. And that 499 is showing as a positive number as budget remaining. Well, that means we're under budget, or we didn't hit the revenue number. So even though that's showing as positive, that's a negative impact on that budget line. So I wanted to highlight that. So if you scroll down, if you look down, the 2.5 million dollar under budget, well, that includes the 1.5 million dollar use of fund balance. So really, we came in basically $1 million off of our total budget for revenues. So that's, that's that's pretty good, not to brag or anything, because you never know which way the number is going to go, but you know, coming in within a million dollars with the COVID and everything, I think we should be really pleased with that. Expenses. We are way under in many categories in expenses. A lot of it had to do with COVID. But once again, salaries, 1.5 million dollars under. So again, highlighting the sign of the numbers for expenses, 1.5 million here is under budget, which is a good thing for expenses. And then I put a note in here that we were actually $1 million under in police and $1 million under in fire in their salaries. So, you know, I believe the chief chief more has indicated they have seven firefighters. They're trying to fill those positions. So an indication of the difficulties that are encountered there, the goals, you know, on those service requirements, times, et cetera, trying to be met, which which they are still doing. But those those numbers being reflected in our budget here being under budget. The benefits are over budget, mostly due to the sickly buyback for the year, contractuals, the legal reorg. It's that's part of the the positive message for salaries is that we moved the legal outsourced out of contractuals up into salaries, and we're still way under in salaries. But that's one of the reasons why why we're under in contractuals, because that significant outsourcing expense was was not incurred in contractuals. And we have significant dollars set aside for economic development, studies, et cetera. Between those three categories, I have there the legal reorg, economic development, VCPA advertising, which was shut down. That's a million dollars of the two. And then commodities, fuel, we were way under for the year for fuel. Fuel prices came way down. It was like $190,000 under in fuel. Electricity was a couple hundred thousand dollars under. And then, as I indicate there, supplies reduced by COVID. We just didn't purchase some of the supplies for parks, et cetera, at the end of the year. But when you're talking about these larger categories and then you have larger individual items, they add up in a hurry. Contractuals has 500 accounts that make up that number. And, you know, so that's an average of something like $8,000 per account that we're under. So there's different ways of looking at it, but a lot of times these these larger variances are driven by four or five different categories. And then down at the bottom, the transfers out, the subsidy, the golf, we're looking at a 400 to 500,000 subsidy to golf that will be bringing back to council as a budget amendment. That's that's actually being offset from a transfer out position by the lower local motor fuel tax and home rule related to COVID. So we're lowering the transfers to asphalt and concrete related to those reductions. So to kind of summarize, here, we're looking at a $900,000 surplus. Again, positive related to going into 21 where our $5 million you know, scenario number one, we had come up with a backup plan for that, and part of the backup plan was using 1.25 million dollars of fund balance. So since the quarantine was extended, you know, we're looking at another 2 and 1/2 million dollars potentially of fund balance that will be needed to to cover that. And then we'll do some assessments based on July's home rule from there. Final comment that I have is the final adopted budget books have been posted online. They are unchanged from the proposed, other than the future years are included. So years 22 through 25 by department. And then we have the City Manager letter in there as well, which is a good resource for the community, I believe, kind of summarizing our approach to the budget, concerns the city may have, the future years, what we've done to acknowledge concerns, you know, action plans, kind of it splits up the budget into understandable components. So it's kind of, to me, if you, if the community is looking for one place, one thing to look in the budget, read that City Manager letter and get a pretty good feel for the situation of our financials and where we think we might be going. That was a lot of information for my comments make saying that I'll be going over more in in July. So I'll pause now for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions of Mr. Rathman. Ah, excuse me. Questions of Mr. Rathman. All righty. Thank you so much. You must have preempted absolutely everything, Scott, and thank you so much. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gleason for City Manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a handful of comments, but I'll move quickly. The first one that I wanted to comment to was under regular agenda item 10B. When we were talking about the emergency order and Alderwoman Bowlin is the one that made the motion. And I know that the motion comes off of the printed agenda. But I think I said that this will, the staff recommended was Phase Four. At the end, the 90-day clock will begin. It is not that. It is at the beginning of Phase Four, the 90-day clock will begin. And again, I know that the recommendation was for the printed document, but I just want to make sure that my comments were accurate and succinct with the agenda. The other item that I was going to share was our Zoom meeting on our council meeting on Monday night. What occurred according to our IT interim director, Craig Macbeth, is the Zoom connection to YouTube. There was some sort of problem. He was on it, you know, right away emailing, trying to hit chat and calling and no response. We launched the meeting fine, but as a remedy, Craig not only came up with a backup if we saw the same problem, he's got a backup to the backup if we ever experience this again. So I just wanted to share that with you as well. If you guys would do the next slide for events, please. And I'm sorry, not events yet since it's 2020. We're down the homestretch. McLean County is still tracking very well compared to the other counties in the state, and it's so critical. Next slide. And this is the farmer's market that is live at the downtown. Again, the virtual and online stuff that we did curbside was very successful, but it's nice to be back in socially distancing to the way that everybody's used to. Next slide. And then at Community of the Whole, we had this slide that was ready, but I didn't call on it. So I'm the one that is remiss here. But we we welcome seven new employees. And you see them before you, police officers, parks and water plant, and also a city engineer that came from Bloomington, Indiana. So he's at the better Bloomington, I think. All right. The next item is Alderman Matthew had another council initiative, and it was about downtown parking. Wanted to provide an update that's going to require no council action whatsoever. There's going to be no code change in this trial period. There's going to be no amendment to the union agreement for operating hours, but our parking enforcement typically works until 4:00 PM. Our code for parking enforcement runs until 6:00 PM. So what we're doing for a 90-day trial run is to offer a single two-hour overtime slot for the normal days that we do parking enforcement. So that's going to be the trial run, and at the end of 90 days, we'll bring that back before council. But just wanted to bring at least temporary, you know, during this interim, bring some closure to that council initiative from Alderman Matthew. And that is all I've got, Mayor. Council, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gleason, for for this and all you do. I just wanted, the only things that I wanted to address were just the 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 general role, of course, of the city. It, one of our most important functions, perhaps beyond public safety, is to promote economic development. And that includes business development, expansion, retention, as well as attraction. And that's really important, not just to bring and create more wealth within our community and jobs and employment, but for us for the future. Sometimes we get cutting-edge things like Rivian. And so that's, that's really very important for us. And so I just wanted to to highlight that, that that's one of our most important goals. If there are concerns about the specific practices of a particular business, we do have a human relations commission that can take complaints. And if they are discriminatory practices, they can take those planes, excuse me, can take those complaints and investigate them, come up with facts and issue an evidence-based decision if there are specific concerns. But we welcome all kinds of investment, irrespective of who someone may have voted for for president, and we have to be in that position. We could hardly have a checklist, an ideological checklist, before we accept people's money in our community. And I just think that that's that's something that I've heard a lot about and questions about, but I just wanted to to set the record straight that I think, you know, at least when I go to the US Conference of Mayors, I don't think there's any mayor that wouldn't agree at 500 feet to that particular point. Again, but if there's real discrimination, we want to have an evidentiary hearing and a fact-based decision on that. That's all I have. I'm going to go ahead and start with council member comments, and we're going to start, well, we have word one, Mr. Matthew, Councilmember Matthew is not here. Councilmember Bowlin, I'll start with you, and then we'll go around the die, the equivalent of the dais. Councilmember Bowlin.
You're on mute, Donna.
Donna. Oh, thank you. Donna.
Oh, we heard you for a second. You you got it for a second.
Okay, okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can. Okay. I just wanted to share something that's going on in Ward Two. Early last year, a gentleman reached out to me. He's a new property owner and landlord for one of the low-income housing areas along South Main Street. And he is on a mission to turn that neighborhood into a community. And we've been working together over the past several months, and he has multiple great ideas that he wants to interject into those neighborhoods. And I'm doing everything I can because my philosophy is one neighborhood at a time to improve quality of life. And I think that's, that's his goal, and I'm behind him 100% from the bottom up to move forward. That's all I wanted to share. Thank you.
Very much. Let's see, if you'll go ahead and put your light in your hands up there. I didn't see Alderman Wambway. I don't see you. Councilmember Emig, I don't see. Councilmember.
Oh, I'm here. I'm here.
No, did you say something?
Yeah, I just, I just want to acknowledge that a couple Saturdays.
But I didn't see a hand up. I'm sorry.
No, of course not. I see I now you're looking for the hand, so I got to remember to do that. A couple of weekends ago, the Bistro hosted with the Prairie Pride Coalition at Pulse Memorial, and it was just an incredible moving service and ceremony on behalf of the community that was lost. Well, it seems like 100,000 years ago, given what we're going through now, but I wanted to acknowledge that. And we also had an event this past Saturday to really emphasize resilience around the theme of music and what a difference music can make in our lives and to provide resource, local resources to the community. Jazz Up Front hosted the event, and then it rained cats and dogs, so a lot of people couldn't attend. But they they just powered through and and still had a, did what they could to have a really great ceremony. I don't know if if any of you, I think a lot of you are participating in this, but I don't know in general, for the record, if if the public knows that the United Way is having Saturday Town Hall meetings. They used to have them at 11:00. Now they've moved them back to 9:00 AM. And if you go to the the United Way Facebook page, you'll see a link, a Zoom meeting invite, and they also stream live on Facebook. So that that Town Hall meeting is about an ongoing effort to bring together different community organizations across McLean County to address whatever existing needs there are with COVID-19. And it's just a really useful information session and an opportunity to communicate what needs are out there as they keep trying to address what what to expect in the future. So I just wanted to say that. Oh, and finally, a former councilwoman, Diana Howman, sent all of us, I believe, an email about putting a census sign in our respective front yards. And I think that's a great idea. We want to get as many people counted as possible. So I promised her that I would mention this and be sure that all of us get a sign in in case we don't have one. Because it, everything we do can only help. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then, and thank you, actually, I was remiss in not mentioning that we had a June Juneteenth march on Saturday that was largely rained out. We managed to, most of us had umbrellas. I think there were only about a dozen of us that marched from Wesley Church to Jazz Up Front. But but we did sit up in front of the Law and Justice Center and talk about all kinds of issues and police demilitarization and many other things on Saturday evening, early evening. police demilitarization and many other things on Saturday evening, early evening. But thank you. At this point, I'm gonna turn to Councilmember Carillo and then Councilmember Craybill.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Yeah, I've got a couple of things to run through. One, just because, you know, controversy, it's a thing. Just, I don't have a whole lot to say about this, but I want to clarify for you all that I haven't spoken to directly, and for the folks listening at home, I did not write said business list. I think there was word on the street that that was my doing. It was not my doing. I don't have a lot more to say about it than that. Also, want to send out like a huge shout out to staff for all the work that they have been doing downtown. I completely agree with the comments that Justin Boyd put forward to us via email today. Like, I think that this, like, we've made something good out of something bad. That's like demonstrating how adaptable and resilient our community downtown is. And I want to see this, like, I want that to, to be our community as long as it's weather permitting. So I want to find a way for us to make that feeling of like life in the streets a permanent fixture of our downtown. Also participated in the Pulse Memorial, so want to send a shout out and a thank you to Lori and the Bistro and Jan Lancaster and the Prairie Pride Coalition. It was powerful. Somebody, so we had folks standing, 50 folks basically standing to represent all the life that was lost. And somebody said, like, what, what if that had happened at our Pulse? What if that had happened at the Bistro? And I literally just cannot imagine my life if those folks were taken from our community. So I really appreciated that we made some space to acknowledge that loss here. Want to congratulate the folks at Black Lives Matter for a really amazing community celebration on Juneteenth. I think it was 13 people that successfully got bailed out of, of McLean County Jail. And so that, that was worthy of a, of a celebration. They also unveiled an improved set of demands, a new and improved set of demands that they basically crowdsourced from the community, which include defunding police, ending profiteering from incarceration, anti-racist and police-free schools, investing in the success of black people, and expanding access to voting. And I hope that those of us around the dais who expressed solidarity with this movement at our last meeting can commit to doing the work of at least listening, even if they are not the demands that we would have written and the words that we would have used. You know, if we are in solidarity with this movement that is fighting for black lives, then at a minimum, we should, we should take a step back to listen to what folks have to say and why they're saying it, because I think we build a more equitable community by centering the folks who are marginalized and not necessarily just the folks that are marginalized that we agree with or that make us feel comfortable. But actually, I think challenge is a sign that we're actually growing as a community. So thanks to those folks for doing the work. And then looking forward, was really excited to see the announcement today in the press release about the city starting to distribute direct aid assistance. Given all the unrests and the uprisings that have been happening over the last few weeks, that feels like that was a conversation from a million years ago. And it, it was a set of difficult conversations, but we got there. And that's a really good thing for our residents. So I'm really excited and proud of the work that we did on this council to make that happen. I just got an email that July 2 at 10:00 AM is the Market Street Plaza demolition ceremony. And who doesn't love a demolition? So encourage folks to go and show their support for this ambitious project that aims to end our food desert in West Bloomington. And then last, I am hosting one of my community council meetings on July 9 at 6:00 PM. I'm still scared of the Rona, so we are doing it online for the foreseeable future. So that's all my things I've got to share.
Thank you. That was action-packed. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, that's, that's not a criticism in the slightest. It was an empirical assessment. And thank you for setting the record straight and for calling for a more equitable society, because I think we can all agree on that for sure. And we have Councilmember Craybill. And yeah, it looks like you get the last word, dude.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Jen took a lot of what I was gonna say, but one of the things that I would maybe suggest would be a good idea for a meeting of the whole would be to have the Human Relations Commission come in and kind of explain what they do. I think it's kind of an untapped resource, and a lot of people don't understand, and they could talk about what they can do for people and maybe some examples of, of what they've done in the past and some of the things they're looking at doing to, to help improve the community. So just, just to throw that out there. I am having a, I'll call it my Town Hall, that I try to do on off, off-meeting weeks, but since we're having a township meeting on Monday, I'm gonna have a meeting the next day on Tuesday at, at 6:00 PM. So that'll, the details will be on my Facebook page. Remind people that bulk waste, the pickup, the free pickup starts July 6, I believe. And I, I don't know, I just thought I'd ask this. Tim, when do you think we might be meeting in person for council?
Actually, when, when I commented to, oh, the internal discussion about what Phase 4 means for us, that's actually one of the things that we're trying to figure out. If you want me to comment to this real quick, I think that there's still gonna be an option for the elected officials to meet virtually. But we do think that there's gonna be a requirement that we open the council chambers to the public. So even if we had a blend of some council electing be virtual, some sitting at the dais, they still would be working off of a laptop and still being virtual. And we'd probably put some large screen TVs up for anybody that would be in attendance so that they can watch the live stream, because we'd still be operating that way as well. Don't hold me to that, but I think that's what we're leaning towards in the interpretation of Phase 4.
Great. Thank you, Tim. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Craybill. Excellent question. And thank you, Tim. We, we've been talking about some of these, these possibilities and transitions, so thank you for making that clear. But at this point, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Councilmember Carillo. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Bowlin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those can stay on. Good evening, everybody. Bye-bye.
Good night. Thanks all.
Good night.